Good evening, everyone. This is the June 21st, 2022 work session. The time is 6:09 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. As usual, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Because this is a work session, there is no public comment this evening, so we will move forward with board presentations. And our first board presentation this evening is the monthly Treasury Report. Charlene Cagle Betts, our village administrator and treasurer, will begin with her presentation. Thank you, Charlene.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so as of May 31st, we're in our preliminary year end. Our adopted budget, we had $32.2 million in budgeted revenue. To date, we've received just over $35 million, so we exceeded the budget by about $2.8 million. There are still some year-end adjustments that are coming in, some accruals, et cetera, and some receivables that we haven't collected yet. So that number is very preliminary, but will be changing. Some of the projected revenue drivers that really brought that number up, as stated before, building permits. We brought in $2.4 million, which exceeded our budget by 1.1. Mortgage tax, which we brought in. Our budget was $850,000. We brought in just over 1.7, so that exceeded the budget to the tune of about $830,000. Suffolk County sales tax, used for public safety purposes, exceeded the budget by $60,000. And utilities tax, we finally got the last payment, $583,000, which exceeded our budget by almost $200,000. Expenditures as of today, we are at about $31.8 million of our $32.2 budget, about 98%. We will still be paying May 31st bills. We'll see it on our warrant when we go to adopt a warrant. We do have two separate warrants for the payables, which are the bills that are actually for the prior fiscal year, May 31st. And we will still, probably until about June 14th, that next meeting, July 14th, still be paying some of those bills. And then we'll try to cut off at that point in time and get our year-end books starting to close out, because our auditors should be here sometime end of August.
August, right.
End of August. So we're in the process of that. And I'm happy to announce that our e-requisition program is implemented. So our department heads are now electronically entering their purchase requisitions. I think you may have seen some of the updated forms. There are some straggler-resistant department heads that we're starting to move along, but we should be getting there very shortly. So I just wanted to see if the board had any questions on that report.
Charlene, do you have any sense in the revenue that's kind of user-sensitive, like building permits, of a trend? Is it slowing down as the months have passed?
Well, I think there was not really. There was actually a slow week last week. They were stating that they didn't see as much activity. And I think it might have just been a fluke, because yesterday, today, when I went upstairs, there was a line out the door in the hallway. So it seems to still be pretty busy. And I think that we're still going pretty strong. There's still some, a lot of, I know we have a bit of a backlog right now, too. So they're getting caught up little by little, but they're still seeing a lot of activity in the building department.
Kudos to the Building Department. They've done a great job. Obviously, it was a very heavy load this past fiscal year, and they were able to keep up. So I wanted to thank our Building Department. Any other questions or comments from the board? I have a few other questions here. First, so we're about $300,000 under the expenditures in our adopted budget. I know you said there's a few bills that are coming in. Do you have any sense of whether that's going to be under the $300,000, or are we going to be above that from an expense standpoint?
I don't see, most of the bills are in. We did have a bit of a cushion, but that pretty much got blown out. I believe we were over about $240,000 on hospitalization, the health insurance. But the health insurance, that was one of the drivers that kind of brought us over. And we did have those, we did do a budget modification for them, but we did have a lot of those retirement payouts, which kind of drove us to increase our expenditures. You know, we could also increase the revenue for it. We used that, we funded that through the use of our surpluses and our reserves. But it does increase the expenses.
All right, thank you. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to fund some of those long-term liabilities and long-term debt through some of those retirement payouts. It's great that we exceeded our budget by $2.8 million. So the hope is that there is some funds left over that we can then appropriate. There's some great projects, whether those be water quality projects, capital expenditures such as repairing Village Hall, which is in need of repair. And we're looking forward to getting to work on that, as well as some other capital improvements around the village. So we're hoping we might be able to tap into some of that excess budget if there's anything left after some of those retirement payouts. But maybe, when will we know exactly how much will be left over in the surplus?
I would say by the next meeting, when we finish paying out. I'm actually sending out an email to the department heads tomorrow to kind of get on whatever vendors might have any outstanding and get those in. That should kind of, and I think at that point in time, we should have a good sense of where we are.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
A lot of our capital expenditures. I think I've been sending some emails. After the board adopted the capital budget last month, a lot of the department heads are coming back to me and saying, oh, we had $280,000 in budget, or it came out to be $286,000. So we're having a little bit of problems with the prices because the inflation has been kind of rolling through and affecting our capital budget. And the other item, too, is that our fuel expenses.
Crazy.
Yeah, they've actually gone quite.
Yeah, more than doubled.
But we did increase it in the user and budget. So hopefully, it'll be enough. Prices will level off at some point.
Absolutely. Next year, when we put together next year's budget, that's going to be a bit of a challenge, because I'm sure we'll see an increase of the health insurance premiums. And then this year, there's certainly going to be an increase in the retirement benefit contributions. We do have a tax stabilization fund that our deputy mayor helped set up. We always could add to that as well if need be. So anyway, this is a great report. Looks like we're in good fiscal shape, so thank you very much. We'll keep it up. So we'll keep moving. The next board presentation this evening in what will be looking like a more brief meeting tonight will be the Tree City USA requirements. And this is presented by Christian Pico from our Southampton Village Planning Commission. And we are waiting for Christian to join us, and he will be with us momentarily.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. For the benefit of the public who doesn't know me, because I know all of you do, I'm Christian Pico from the Planning Commission, and I'm here to speak to you about Tree City USA. And everything we'll be saying is, of course, for and on behalf of the Planning Commission. Starting with urban density that's increasing in the village, it's important to maintain and even improve the quality of our public trees. And that will contribute to residents' quality of life. So as requested by this board, the Planning Commission has reviewed the application requirement to the National Harbor Foundation to become a Tree City USA. So this is a path to grants and also a path to an urban forest management plan for the village. Currently, the Parks Department plants trees and the DTW trims the tucks. The village needs policies, procedures, and coordinations for the management of this asset, the tree. But I'd like to point out that this discussion is exclusively on public trees. The master plan has a recommendation for private trees, which we'll set aside for now. The village has roughly 15,000 trees, of which 5,000 are in need of care or replacement. So the Tree City application requirements are four main items. First, a Harbor Day proclamation. Second, a sufficient dedicated budget. Third, a permanent tree board meeting regularly. And fourth, a public tree ordinance. These are the four requirements to make a Tree City application. I know the Parks Department tried to do one last year, but it failed. I spoke to the people in Lincoln, Nebraska, who had received their file, which wasn't prepared. So we're going to get that done for this year. In order to get this done for Harbor Day proclamation and a dedicated budget for trees, the village passes those first key tests. A tree board needs to be formed, and it will need to work on a proper tree ordinance. Chapter 107 of the Village Code will need revision to conform. So the recommendation to this group tonight is for the trustee liaison for the Parks Department to propose a resolution for the formation of a tree board, constituents of this board, and its mission. If the resolution passes, the tree board will work with the village planner and council to propose a revision to Chapter 107. The application for Tree City USA can be submitted only once a local law is passed for a conforming tree ordinance. The revision will require public hearings, and this is going to take time. The application itself is an annual process, and the deadline is December 31st. So I would urge the trustee to make her motion at the next board of trustees and for all of you, Bill Manger, when he's there, to support it. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Christian. I have a few questions, but before that, any questions or comments from the board?
No. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I may.
All right.
Christian, how are you today?
I'm better, thank you.
Good, glad.
Vertical is the answer.
What's that?
I'm vertical, thank you.
Gotcha. Is there, I mean, you mentioned there's going to be need to have some revisions to Section 107 for this accomplishment that the village wants to do. Is there any sample or suggested code that can get us over the finish line, so to speak?
Absolutely, thank you for the question. So we've done a lot of work on it. And I'll take this opportunity to thank, this is Laura Davini, who has collected a lot of documents and will be making recommendations to us in order to expedite this process. It's going to be a lot of copy and paste, and I hate to say this to you, Ken, because we're going to have to make sure that as we do that, there are references to trees in some other sections of the code, and we're going to have to make sure that everything ties in very, very, very well. But to your question in terms of work to be done, 90% of it has already been completed at the Planning Commission. And I will share that with you as soon as this board works with you to get this done, and then we can have a public hearing.
Terrific, yeah, okay, great. I appreciate that, and I'm happy to hear that you appreciate the issues of when you change one section of the code, it's going to affect other sections of the code, which we must be sensitive about. So, all right, great. I look forward to working with you again.
Okay, yes, we've identified all of these other sections already, and we'll need to make sure that they all tie in together.
Terrific, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Actually, my question was similar in line to yours as far as if there was a sample public tree ordinance that we could pass. So we're looking forward to working with you on that. And then I think if it's okay, we can have a walk-on resolution with the creation of a tree board. Obviously, we don't have members at this point, but we can put together members. And then once we form that board, I think we can task them with, you know, obviously, helping us with some additional tree plantings. One of the things that makes Southampton Village special is our trees, especially some of our historic trees. You could identify certain streets, obviously, if it corresponds by them. So we want to make sure that we continue that tradition, add to what we already have. And then I've heard some great ideas from Christian of the Planning Commission about tree plantings, nurseries, tree inventory. Again, one of many, many projects that we have that we're working on. So Christian, thank you very much. We'll add a walk-on resolution tonight with the formation of a tree board. And then once we have some volunteers, we can appoint them as well.
Mr. Mayor, I can make a recommendation for the tree board constituents. We discussed it on the Planning Commission. Would make the recommendation that initially, this board be constituted with three members. The Planning Commission, some members have thought that later on, we can enlarge it to five. It includes some village residents. But for now, I think we need to be very focused. I think the members of this tree board would recommend that you have one to be trustee liaison for the parks, two to be the village planner, and three to be a Planning Commission member who's been working on this. That will have an efficient team to work with the village planner and Ken Gray to have a good revision to this 107, so that we can move forward and make sure that we have our application in time, given the municipal process with public hearings for a local law for this revision. That's our recommendation.
All right, thank you, Christian. All right, so we'll keep moving. There's no communications to the board tonight. Thank you again, Christian. We'll move forward with our suggested resolutions, so I will pass this over to Charlene.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number one, resolve that the claims for the warrant dated June 21st, 2022, totaling $108,999.43 for an A4 general fund, $24,250.35 for an H1 capital fund, $32,018.36 for a T2 CS trust fund, and $120,618.49 for E2 payables are voided and approved. Is there a resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Just a quick discussion. Just want to let our board know, obviously, as things progress here, there's a few expenditures that we just need to make sure that we can rein in. So clearly, I'll be voting for this resolution, but just want to obviously work with everybody to make sure that we continue to rein in the costs to our village residents. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number two, resolve the board of trustees approves the mayor or his designee to sign a grant contract with New York State Office of Parks and Historic Preservation for Architectural and Historical Structures Recognance Survey. Update in the amount of $10,000.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution number three, resolve the board of trustees approves Southampton Village Ocean Rescue to lifeguard for the Southampton Intermediate Schools Day at the Beach at Coopers Beach on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, from 8:30 AM to 10:45 AM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four, resolve the board of trustees approves the use of Agloon Park for the multicultural fair and gospel concert presented by Kaleidoscope on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution number five, resolve that the board of trustees hereby appoint Xanthie Lazarakis to the position of student intern in the Justice Court at a rate of $15 per hour, effective June 22nd, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution number six, resolve the board of trustees approves the appointment of Mohammed Arid Yassin as a part-time EMT paramedic at a rate of $28 per hour, effective June 14th, 2022. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution number seven, resolve that the board of trustees appoints Lydia Palmer as temporary senior office assistant at an hourly rate of $34 per hour, effective June 22nd, 2022. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Resolution number eight, resolve the board of trustees approves that Jesse Warren is mayor of the South Village of Southampton or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funds from the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation in accordance with the provision of Title IX of the Environmental Protection Act of 1993, and in amount not to exceed $500,000, with local funding, a local matching share to total 50% of eligible costs. And upon approval of said request to enter into and execute a project agreement with the state of New York for such financial assistance to the Village of Southampton for the Rogers Mansion Restoration Project, and if appropriate, a conservation easement preservation competent to the deed of the assisted property. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Question, please. Mayor, can you give us a little background on what this is about?
I'll defer this to Charlene. It's an application that we're working on.
Jen Eziano's been working on this application with Tom Edmonds. And it is, once a year, the consolidated funding application comes around, and they're actually able to apply for historic preservation funds. It's very competitive, and the chance of getting it is very slim. But we've been applying every year in hopes that we would get a chunk of money to help restore the Rogers.
If we do get it, our exposure could be up to $250,000.
Well, the local match could be met by both a fundraising effort from the museum and any funds. And we do commit $75,000 a year in our budget to assist the museum. So we could straddle it and use $150,000 over a two-year period for that as well.
Thank you.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And do we have a resolution? Do we have a motion to walk on a resolution to establish the tree board?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the resolution. Resolution number nine, resolve that the board of trustees creates a Southampton Village tree board to implement a Tree City USA initiative. Shall we name the members? Not name them, but.
Charlene, I think it's a tree committee, not a tree board.
Okay, tree committee. Thank you.
And they're going to be empowered to make recommendations to the board of trustees.
Empowered to make recommendations to the board of trustees.
Thank you.
Okay.
It may actually be a tree board as defined by Tree City, though. I know it may just be semantics, but.
Aye. Is Christian still on the phone, or Christian still on the phone, or not?
I think he dropped off.
Why don't we just say tree board slash committee?
Okay.
In the resolution, would that work?
Yes.
Tree board slash committee. Okay, so resolve that the board of trustees create Southampton Village Tree Board slash Committee and to implement Tree City USA initiative and empowered to make recommendations to the board of trustees for this implementation.
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That would conclude the resolution portion.
Thank you, Charlene. We'll now move to comments from board members. We'll begin with trustee Arresta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to state that I've enjoyed working with Joe McLaughlin for this past term. I know it was a short period of time that he was here, but I appreciate all the work that you did for the village, Joe. And I wish you well, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arresta. Trustee Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say the same and echo. I wish you the best, Joe, and much success in your future endeavors. And I hope that everyone had a lovely Father's Day and Juneteenth weekend, and look forward to a very good summer. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee McLaughlin.
Sorry, I couldn't be there in person this evening. I had a private engagement, and I was, which, trustee elect, Bill Manger, the best of luck in his new role as trustee, and I wish you all the best. And it was great working as a trustee, and it was a pleasure and an honor. So thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you very much, trustee McLaughlin. Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to second comments that have been made regarding giving thanks to Joe for the work that he's done on behalf of the village. Well done, Joe. Thank you very much. And congratulations to Bill Manger Jr. and trustee Arresta on their victory in the election on Friday. I look forward to working with both of them going forward. I'd also like to just say that I want to thank Kathy Sweeney, the village clerk, and everybody from the village, Charlene, and all the people in the village who worked so hard to make the election process go so smoothly. I happened to go over to Election Hall towards the end of the night and met with the attorneys who had been there to supervise the election. And it was gratifying to hear them comment just how smoothly and effectively our staff had run the election. So congratulations to all of those people, and thank you for their hard work.
Thank you very much, trustee Stevenson. And then I will conclude with a few quick comments. First, I just wanted to thank the Southampton Village Fire Department for putting together the blood drive today. It was quite steady traffic going in. There'll be another blood drive in a few months. Very important event. There's never enough blood that could be donated, particularly as there's so many patients right now that have medical and health needs. So, you know, a big thank you to the Southampton Village Fire Department for putting that together. Number two, looking forward to the organizational meeting, which will be our next meeting, first one in July. We'll have an opportunity to work with the new board. And with that, I wanted to congratulate trustee Arresta on the recent election, and then also extend a debt of gratitude and thank trustee McLaughlin for his service to the village. He not only served as a trustee, but also a member of the Village Planning Commission, I believe, since 2017. And wanted to thank him for his work on both the commission and as a village trustee. And then lastly, just wanted to welcome Bill Manger. He'll be returning to the board, and I'm looking forward to working with him, as well as the rest of this board, on a lot of big projects that we have up and coming. We're going to have to work very quickly. There's a lot to do. These two-year terms are very short. Doesn't give us a whole lot of time to get to work, and so we will really have to dig in. There's a number of capital projects that we'd like to work on and implement. There's a number of parks and beautification projects, as well as in our downtown, we'd like to implement. I mentioned fixing and repairing Village Hall to restore it to some of its past standards. And looking forward to working with our Department of Public Works, in particular, to really get our village in even better shape. And then also looking forward just working with all of our respective departments and trying to make those departments as great as possible. all of our respective departments and try to make those departments as great as possible. And again, a lot of hard work to do, looking forward to digging in, and we hope not to disappoint. So, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.